All right, it's 6:00 PM and we'll get started. I'll call the December 7th, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting to order. If you'll all stand and have the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
Remain standing, Councilman Bridges is going to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Lord God for this day. Thank you for just letting us get up today within our right minds and our health and strength, dear heavenly Father. Lord God, I would just like to pray for bereaved families and the sickness that's going on right now in our community, dear heavenly Father, that you would touch the people that has impacted, Lord God. Lord God, just have your way with us to lead us and guide us, dear heavenly Father, to do the things that you would have us to do in unity, dear heavenly Father. And as we go forth through this meeting tonight, that you would guide us and lead us and help us and direct us in every decision that we make and everything that we do. This and all other blessings in your dear son Jesus Christ's name we pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Bridges. Okay, at this time we'll have our citizens' comments.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time I would like to call Charles Phillips to the podium, 552B Alabama Circle, Carrollton.
Okay. And before you start, Mr. Phillips, let me remind everybody that public comments are public comments. They are to be addressed to the Mayor and Council. The Mayor and Council will not respond. If it's something that needs to be responded to, our staff will respond appropriately. We ask that you keep your comments directed in general and not at any specific member of the council. And there's a three-minute time limit. Okay, Mr. Phillips?
And the mayor and rest of the board. My name is Charles Phillips. I reside at 552 Alabama Circle, Department B, Carrollton, Georgia, that's in the Housing Authority. And I'm a community leader as well. I've been a community leader for a good many years now. I had a problem, well, I'll go to the first thing, first I want to ask about the houses on the Martha Luther King Road streak. Some vacant houses are there and I understand that the city is in charge of those houses. So if I could get some input about how you go about getting them, is they finished yet or when they might be finished? Someone, City Council Bridges, either you, Mayor, can direct my answer to that? And I got some, another answer, question or two.
We have Ms. Erica Studdard and she will contact you tomorrow.
Okay.
She may have some information for you, but otherwise she'll contact you tomorrow on how to pursue that.
That's great then. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I, I'm requesting along with a few of my members, City Council, I mean, peoples in the, in the community, about requesting a meeting with you, Mayor, and our district, City Council member, Ms. Bridges, and possibly the police chief. I had an incident last month that did not go very well with the police department. And, no, I'm not a bad guy. So let's get that off the record right now. But I was buying tickets at the Marathon store on Maple Street. And I had one thirty-one dollars, but I think it was total four tickets, total in thirty-one dollars. I go there all the time. It was a young lady that was handling the cash register that day. And she just wasn't attended and I knew that. And when I handed her my tickets, even though I stood there and bought the tickets and scratched off a few, all of that was done right in front of her. And she put it under the light and she said, oh, this said it's been paid. And we had a problem right there. So I said, I just bought them from you, sweetheart. I said, I've been standing here scratching off right in front of you, da-da-da-da. Anyway, one of the managers came here, one of the guys worked, I think he worked as a utility person there. I was dealing with all three of them, gapping over top of me. And I'm saying, don't stick another one of my tickets under the light because it's going to say the same thing and I can't go get a cash anywhere else then, I done did it before. They didn't listen to that, they went ahead and proceed. All of them saying they've been cashed out. And so they continued to attack me to the point I said, call the managers, call the owners, call the police department. That's how bad I was being attacked. They refused to do all this, so I walked outside and called the police, myself. Police came, police came.
Mr. Phillips, that's the end of your time. We'll be glad to address that. I'll, we can address it tomorrow with the police chief.
Okay, I'd like, we would like to have a meeting with you guys about that, is what I'm saying.
All right. Thank you.
This time I'd like to call Mr. Patrick Cavillo, 301 Bradley Street, Carrollton.
Hello, Ms. Mayor, City Council members. This is just an introduction. I just moved here from Kansas a couple months ago and I just got the job at the Rafa Clinic of West Georgia in Temple as the development, or the Director of Development. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself and I'm excited to work with Carrollton and the surrounding areas for different fundraisers and events. And yeah, so I just wanted to come up here and introduce myself and say that I'm excited to, you know, bring some, some joy to the Rafa Clinic and the city of Carrollton, so.
Oh, well, thank you for coming and introducing yourself and we will, I'm sure our paths will cross again.
Exactly. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, no other citizens to make comments? Okay, we have minutes from November and we have the Mayor and Council Meeting from November 2nd. Is there any additions or corrections to those? Okay.
I make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We also have the minutes from the Mayor and Council Work Session on November 19th. And I understand there may be some corrections to these. Mr. Ledbetter has been under the weather and was there by phone that day. And Mr. Ledbetter, you said you had voted on item number? Nine, is that correct?
Yes.
The motion three. So that should be motion passed with a three, oh, with Mayor Kason and Mayor Protimbin Waters abstaining.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Is there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Do we have a motion to accept these with that correction made? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, at this time we have our Mayor and Council announcements and comments. We'll start on my left with Ms. Councilman Bridges.
Good evening. I would like to say for Kathy Parsons for doing the lantern walk, that was a beautiful event. If you missed it, you missed a treat. All the praying and all the unity that was going on for the lantern walk was beautiful. And I just wanted to tell her, thank her for that. I also like to thank the frontline workers for helping us and keeping us safe during this pandemic, especially Tanner. The numbers are going up again. We need to be mindful of the pandemic and make sure we keep our masks on, wash our hands, and our social distancing. And also I would like to say that this square is so beautiful. If you haven't went and looked at it, please, by all means, go look at it, it is so beautiful. And also to shop local, keep our revenue here in our city to keep it going. And I just wanted to say that and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Uglum?
Well, I'd like to give a big round of applause to several groups that went out and worked very hard to provide meals to folks in our community, the homeless and those that are living in these extended stay hotels. Latoya Gamble and Jett, and I don't remember Jett's last name, but she runs Simply Catering, went to, I believe, seven of these extended stay hotels and put on a beautiful display of food on Thanksgiving Day. It was a beautiful day, they fed hundreds of people and it was a joyous thing. I know Tono and Christie at Cafe 27, with a lot of help, fed fifteen hundred people on Thanksgiving.
Wow.
Yes. And, you know, in a city of our size, by the time you add these two groups together, that's a lot of folks. So very thankful, you know, there's restaurants and catering businesses that are having kind of a hard time during this pandemic that be thankful for all they do. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Waters? Okay.
I am too.
Okay. Well, I just want to say the same thing. We are such a fortunate community to have such giving people. We met with some people last Friday from our Georgia Municipal Association and our Association of County Commissioners. And they were just so surprised at the group of people that was together and all the giving and working together and the camaraderie and the collaborative that goes on in our city and in our county. And it was, you know, that says a lot for our community. And then what Councilman Uglum just said about people giving back in this community despite what's happened with COVID. There, there are a lot of people that still are, you know, working hard to give back to the community and to help those in need. And I want to thank April Saunders and all the other city employees that worked on the square Saturday. That was very neat. They worked really hard. We had some vendors there, we had Santa Claus and kept your social distance, but you could get your picture made with Santa Claus. And as Councilman Bridges says, the square looks really pretty and, you know, it just makes you feel good. There was a, a group, and I think they were from Central High School Chorus, that was singing on the square. And I told my little granddaughter, I said, this is like in the Lifetime Hallmark movies, this walking around the square and people were shopping and not just with the people that were there, but also with our local merchants. And that's, that's great. And let's do, let's do keep our money at home and try to patronize the people that are here that help support our city. And I just, again, will thank our first responders for the wonderful job they do throughout the city and in keeping us safe and definitely the hospital. I know the COVID numbers are just rampant right now. So let's all do all we can to social distance and wear our mask and, you know, if you don't have to go out, then, then don't. I spoke with Dr. Laura Larson and she's very concerned from the Department of Public Health about the surge that we're having in the numbers right now. And to all of our city employees, you do a great job and it's, it's wonderful to have a, a group of employees like we have and, and y'all do so much that goes unrecognized by a lot, but we recognize what a great job you do. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda items for? Oh, I'm sorry, I always skip you. I need to put my glasses on.
I'm easily forgot.
No, not tonight, you're not.
Cause I'm so shy and quiet.
Yeah.
Oh, first I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. And then our marketing team is just fantastic and they did a video about her downtown and you may have seen it, but I'd like for you to see it again. It's only a minute and four seconds long, so if Haley would play that. Wow.
That was awesome.
Wow.
What, what more can I say? I mean, that was done by our, our marketing team and they do a great job.
You know, and I notice a lot of these little towns, they'll pick the one thing that looks okay and they'll put that in their brochure and the rest of it looks kind of not so nice.
Yeah.
We're that good. This city's that good. All those things you see, you go, man, you know, everything up there is that good. So I'm just really proud of it, really. And I heard so many good things about Saturday, so it was a very enjoyable time.
It was good. Okay. Approval of the agenda items to have a motion to approve them? Okay. We need to add item six, which would be an executive session. Okay, personnel. With that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda items?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items. Okay, our first item on the agenda is a food truck court application. And that's by Ms. Erica Studdard, just going to address that.
I think this is our first one, but this is a food truck court permit application that you have before you. We discussed it at your November Work Session. It's for Jill Duncan's Insurance Agency on Maple Streets, at 1654 Maple Street. She's requesting the maximum number of one food truck at a time. We went over this at the Work Session, but she's, she does these kind of customer appreciation events and she wants to start doing them once a month. Because of the nature of our special event ordinance, she's going to have to go ahead and get a permanent permit to have the food truck once a month because we only allow four special events. And this is kind of the best pathway for her to be able to do that. She has done one of them and I think another one may be this week. I'd have to go back and look. She has advertised them on Facebook, so I think she will continue on into the 2021 year. And she has adequate parking to accommodate her request. And she has adequate parking, uh, to accommodate her request.
Okay. Um, do you want to go ahead and just, do we want to vote individually, or we have two applications? Do we need?
I'd be fine with hearing about the other one.
Okay.
Did you say you're them together?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, the other one is with, uh, by, uh, Sherri Bowman. Uh, she goes by Cher. Uh, and she's, uh, requested a food truck, uh, court at the Lowe's parking lot. Again, she is one that has, uh, she's not new, uh, to, to this particular area. She serves, actually, contractors more than anything, um, a- at Lowe's. She's asking for, you know, one mobile food unit, because she's not actually a truck. But, uh, she's asking for one mobile food unit at Lowe's, uh, where she will continue her hot dog business that she currently has. Um, they have more than adequate parking at Lowe's to accommodate any, any sort of new use like this.
She has quite good hot dogs, too. I attest to.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions on either one of these? Okay, all right. Um, do we have a motion to approve both of these food truck applications? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. We have Resolution Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty, which is an inactive sign, uh, resolution. And I have to say, this is, again, part of our efforts to, for beautification, uh, in our city. So, I will let, um, Ms. Stutter to address what this actually does.
Sure. Uh, this particular, uh, ordinance, uh, revision addresses inactive or abandoned signs, uh, within the city. One of the things that we started looking at when we started looking at some of the blighted corridors is what actually makes them look bad. And abandoned signs top the list. And so, we want to go ahead and start trying to tackle some of those abandoned, especially non-conforming signs, and getting them removed. Uh, we've had decent success just asking the owners to take them down. Uh, but, you know, we are going to probably have to ask a little more firmly with some of the property owners to have them removed. And so, we do need the ordinance to, to, to do that. Uh, there is a, did you give them the new revision? Uh, Huck did have a chance to. He added, um, some provisions relating to how the owners or the occupants are served. Um, this will help us from a, an enforcement standpoint, once he gets to municipal court, if it ever gets to that. Uh, so it is slightly different than the ordinance that you reviewed at your November work session, but the substance is essentially the same.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty, uh, related to inactive signs?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, the next item is tow truck workman's comp requirement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this was discussed at your work session. The, um, there was a requirement in the policy on the on-call tow truck list that required that they all have workman's comp. And that is really an issue between the company and their employers, their employees, really not something the city should be in. And I think one of them contacted, uh, uh, Councilman Ogden and explained that he was a one-man show, that the state didn't require him to have workman's comp, so there was no point in it. So, this was an unnecessary requirement, and we think it should be removed. So, before you is a revision to that policy that we're asking you to approve.
Okay. We've all had a chance to review that, so is there any further questions in regards to the requirement of the tow truck companies? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to, uh, adopt the new policy, which excludes the requirement of workman's comp?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there for any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. The next item of business is a bid award for Buffalo Creep Streamba- Streambank Stabilization. Um, and that was originally by Mr. Tommy Holland, but he, um, had to leave. So, Mr. Grizzard, will you go over that with us?
Right. This is not an item that you saw in the work session. We meant to bring it and failed to do so, and, but we need to award, um, in the near, in the next few days, uh, in order to, for people to honor these bids. Oh, Haley, have you got a picture of those? There is a stream that goes through the middle of the city school complex. Uh, it goes along that parking lot where the tennis courts were, uh, where the big culverts are under Ben Scott. And it's eroding away, and nothing's simple anymore. I can tell you, the right way to fix this, and they're not going to let us fix it the right way, the environmental, uh, regulators aren't. But the right way would be to put fabric down and put riprap down, and it would stay forever. But that's too simple, and that wouldn't cost enough money. So, we had to, uh, have a, a properly, an environmentally, uh, accurate design done. And, uh, that took some time. We had to have that permitted by Georgia EPD and EPA. Then we went out to bid, and, uh, the bids are before you. And the low bid and the highest ranking bidder is Integrated Construction Nobility at a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I also want you to know that the city school system, Dr. Albertus, has agreed to pay for half of this. So, we appreciate that very much. He's losing parking lot, and we're losing a stream bank where we have a sanitary sewer line. So, again, I, uh, should apologize for my sarcasm about environmental law, but it, it does get to be frustrating. Uh, but this involves certain plantings they're going to make us put in, certain kinds of stakes we have to put in the, uh, in the bank, but it will stabilize the bank. And it's, it's, it's the way that the regulators are going to make us fix it. If we don't fix it, we're going to lose a sewer line and lose some more parking places. So, we recommend that you award this to Integrated Construction Nobility in the, at the, uh, price of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Do we have a motion to accept this bid of Integrated Construction Nobility of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents? Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. So, we will go into executive session at this time.
I need Jim and Fa-
Do I have a motion to adjourn?